Twenty five and looking at our agenda, the first thing on the agenda is we have minutes to review from the July seventh meeting. I'm not sure if everyone had the opportunity to read those minutes, but I did and I don't have anything to add. No corrections, additions or comments. You look good.
Yeah, I did.
So does anyone, does that mean no one has comment or correction?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we need a second, a second. All right, so a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July seventh. All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. The motions are approved initially. Oh. Tucker abstained, so the total votes are five. So it's five to zero. So it's approved, the minutes of July seven. Okay, so the commission, oh, our next sort of area endeavor tonight. So we have two public hearings and the first is uh.
One, one public hearing.
Somebody's not with us?
No, no, just the, the first one is a public hearing, the second is just a site planning.
Not the other one?
Oh, 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 excuse me. I missed that. All right, so it's one public hearing. Tony, do you want to read the notice for um application twenty five thirteen?
Sure.
Application ZC number twenty five dash thirteen of Matt Haskell of Artifacts or A R T F X. Applicant Simsberry Commons LLC owner for a special exception pursuant to section nine and section twelve. Simsberry zoning regulations to allow additional tenant signage at five three O Bushy Hill Road. Simsberry Commons assessors map B twenty. Block five zero eight lot zero zero one dash B Simsberry Zone B dash three.
Mr. Chairman, um so Matt is with us tonight, he's he's really kind of the design expert for the, for the developer and the debt and the, and the, and the shopping center. But i- it, it's essentially a revision to the unified sign plan at Simsberry Commons. That the unified sign plan uh at Simsberry Commons is, is, is not young. Yeah, uh it, it, the one we, we use to, to, to match signs and, and approve signs is from nineteen ninety nine. So it is, it's, it's difficult and it's complicated. Uh and the applicant is here really to help us revise it as well as to add some additional signs. And that's really why the special exception applies because it, I mean, this is a, this is a singular location in our town. It re- it really is, it is the destination retail center. Our sign code cannot handle this development. So really we have to have a, a unified sign code. So in this case, um Matt is in really with, with, with three different kind of, kind of revisions to it. The first is to add nine new blade signs and those signs is, as he'll, he'll walk you through are the signs they go underneath the canopy um for that, that, that west, uh eastern stretch of, uh of those little inline retail locations. It's also proposing some design modifications for the two freestanding monument signs that he'll walk you through. Uh those monument signs did go to the zoning board of appeals and got approval for, uh I think nine square feet uh of additional signage um like last year. And then um what really amounts to a full modernization and standardization of the sign plan with square footage, common mounting, lighting and standardization that um, that, that will be helpful. So Matt, you wanna, you wanna do the rest of it?
Absolutely. Uh good evening everybody.
Start with your name and address.
Uh for the record, uh my name is Matt Haskell, uh it's twenty seven Britton Drive. Um I'm here from Artifacts representing Simsberry Commons LLC. I guess I'll just give you a little background before we start. We've been working on this project for probably close now it's over two years. A full, I guess, modernization of the plan. Um I guess in nineteen, like when we looked at the nineteen ninety nine plan, a lot of this is driven by Bob's um store. When Bob's was at the height of their, I guess, retail supremacy. A lot of the, a lot of the rules um that we noticed that were in the nineteen ninety nine plan were more geared toward um kind of getting Bob's as much signage as they could. Um they were the main anchor tenant of that plaza at the time. They were in one location in that plaza and then they relocated to a different portion of that plaza and now they're no longer in there. So it gives us an opportunity to really kind of come up with a standardization across the board for um this entire parcel. And this parcel has grown um with the addition of Raising Canes over the past um six months, I think, uh since it's opened. Um so a lot of opportunity to kind of one, make it a lot more simpler. Um I think for, you know, especially the town to make decisions on signage. In addition to kind of handling some of these projects at Artifacts, I also deal with all the permitting. So I have a lot of experience dealing with, you know, municipalities and what they're looking for, for this and also, you know, kind of dealing with some of the bigger corporate names and, and, and understanding what they're looking for. So I think what you'll find is that this is a really good blend of honoring what corporate um kind of what corporate businesses are looking for in um signage and brand identity when they're, when they're coming to parcel, uh parcel like this. And also um keeping in continuance with the zoning regulations um that Simsberry has set up. So that way, you know, it's in conformance um but also allows the brands to kind of express themselves um as they always want to. I guess I'll start um with the under canopy blade signs here. These are just very basic um what I call the retail strip um on the site map. This is just another way to help identify um, you know, kind of the tenants that are there. We went to design review in their last meeting and they wanted us to standardize them to have all white backgrounds. But you see this at a lot of different shopping centers. Just again, it's just another way, we're requesting nine of them uh for a total of thirty six square feet. You know, we've taken away probably with the modernization, we've probably taken away close to um.
That's along here, right?
Yes. Uh we've probably taken away over a thousand square feet of signage in general of the plaza. So we felt with that and the uh monument sign variance that we were approved for, you know, we felt like an additional thirty six square feet wasn't, you know, uh too much of an ask. And it also adds um a little bit more of a directional signage, so to speak, in that plaza. Uh it can be a little confusing. This also helps with pedestrian safety because then you don't have to walk out uh to the road and look to see where you're going if you don't know where you're going, if you are walking around that, that center of this. So this helps kind of alleviate um some of those issues. Uh I'll stop at kind of each junction to see if members have any questions 'cause I know there's gonna be a lot of information covered here. So if anybody has any questions with the canopy blade signs or anything that I've talked about to this point, just let me know.
So is this con- is this considered a modernization of, or is this modernizing what's already there?
No, I, I would, I wouldn't say this is a modernization. But when I say modernization, I mean we've got met, we've got a matrix to work from, we've got a clear map to work from. Um and then, you know, the standards that are also attached, which, which, which I don't have a slide of, but where it describes how they'll be mounted, the lighting that'll be used, that's what we mean. This is, I think, just, this is the addition part, which is this helps pedestrians walking through that canopy section.
Okay. Yep, to, I, I just.
Yeah, but understood.
It just didn't look very modern. So that's why I asked.
Well, there's gonna be more of them, right? So right now the tenants, each tenant along that strip does not have um their own blade sign and this will allow each tenant to have it.
Correct, right.
So it'll be more.
Right.
What kind of signs do they have?
They just have uh wall signs above their um their entrances, like.
On the facade?
Uh on the facades, yep.
You said design review se- asked you to do white, I'm assuming that means you did do white backgrounds in all these?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I'm not objecting to this, but I think when you're, as, as someone who's been driving around there on occasion the last year or so, it's hard to know who's in these stores without some indication on the facade.
There are, there's facade signs, right?
These are just in addition, is that right?
These are in addition to the facade. So, yeah, so, so, so these are your facade, facade signs.
Okay.
So are you suggesting uniform color scheme or name the white background or?
The white background, uh but all, but then allowing uh each of the brands to whatever their font or text colors may be.
So it's not, it's not gonna be uniform. Colors is really all different.
It'll be white, every, every, e- every sign will have a white background.
Right.
But with their own franchise lettering or franchise font.
Yeah.
It's uniform in the sense of the background color and the sizing of each of the signs.
Yeah.
And the sign.
Okay.
As funny as it would be to make like McDonald's have to be green or whatever, I think that they're just gonna have to, yeah, all have their own like individual little like thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
There is a place in Arizona that did do that.
Just like every, no matter like what you are, you look like Starbucks now?
No, um I believe, I forget which town, it's like a small like town, they have very strict design codes. It has to do something with like um something to do with like the way, like where they are positioned in like the mountains and all that kind of stuff. But every sign has to be like blue basically. So McDonald's has a blue, it's blue, it's the only McDonald's in the country that, that has that.
Maybe we want a blue one here.
So the description of is, is the, the colors that each tenant can choose from are limited to the colors that appear in their logo?
Correct.
And when they change their logo, then you would expect them to come and change their sign, right?
Yes.
Is this for the whole place, not just the end section that is being proposed to be torn down for housing?
We are not focused on the housing proposal. We're just worried about what is currently existing now.
Yeah, if you think about it, this is the only place that has a canopy and tenant spaces that you walk down.
Yeah.
It's the only place, there's nowhere else.
So that's why. So is there any design concept for the other sections or we only talking about the canopy?
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that. You'll get to that.
Any other questions about the under canopy signs? Okay. Um these are the modifications to the monument signs that are out front. Um one is on Route forty four outside of Meds Warehouse and the other one is um on Bushy Hill Road.
Josh just saying, just saying. You all right?
So for the record, Kate's here and Megan here and Josh has duties as the interim.
Yep. Um so we were granted a variance by the zoning board of appeals um that increases the reader board uh square footage that allows us to put more tenants and more tenant panels in there. We also were granted the ability to increase, um well actually we are decreasing um the size of the Simsberry Commons text, believe it or not. With and design review stipulated that similar to the blades, uh sorry, uh under canopy signs that all backgrounds on the tenant panel signs have to be white. So those two are gonna be basically the same standard of white background corporate text um for those tenants. As you can see on the right, that's a, that we think that that sign is much more readable. Um than the one on the left, it's much more clear and, and you know, that whole corridor of traffic is, is probably, I would say the highest volume of traffic, um you know, probably in town. So it's already hard enough to see because of the challenges with the parcel. Uh because the parcel does slope downhill from the entrance, so you are looking downwards and I believe the closest point is six hundred feet away uh from the road. Um so, and it's covered with various trees and uh bushes and whatnot. So it is difficult to see some of those wall signs or whatever. So this gives us um, you know, an ability to um show more of it. And you know, with the nineteen ninety nine plan to where we are today, um I believe the nineteen ninety, the nineteen ninety nine plan, there was about six of those retail tenants that we were talking about earlier on that strip. You know, that had increased to, you know, nine or ten at that point. So there's been some expansion over the years um and this is kind of reflective of that. Is there any questions on the?
Could you please clarify what you mean by rail system?
By rail system?
Yes, yes, all signs will be mounted to rail system and counter background.
That's, oh, that's uh on there, we haven't gotten there yet.
Alright, I'm getting it, okay, thanks.
Uh so the last part of this is um, you know, kind of what we just brought.
Uh just, just one, is this uh gonna be lit, you said this one's gonna be lit?
The monument sign?
The light? Yeah.
Uh there is a, it's not gonna be internally illuminated, there is a spotlight that already exists there, but there are.
You can see, you can see it in the ground here.
There are no plans for any changes to illumination.
And does the spotlight stay on overnight or does it shut off at any point?
I do not, I am not aware of, of that.
And uh George and Brittany, I saw in the uh documents that you were gonna look to see if that was consistent with what we're looking at with the dark skies lighting. Do you have any update on that?
Couple things with that, so the dark, this would be something that'd be grandfathered in if it's not changing.
Okay.
Um but also our dark sky lighting will not apply to signage yet.
Okay.
Work on that section.
Great, thank you.
Um so this is where we're gonna kind of talk about a little bit more of the modernization um, you know, to the signage and the way that the nineteen ninety nine plan kind of did it versus how we're proposing um to move forward with this. So these are just kind of mockups that we did, just taking the existing signage for some of the tenants and showing what it's gonna look like. We classified each of the tenants into four different categories. Um there's anchor, there's pad sites, there's anchors, there's junior anchors and there's retail tenants. So each of those has different requirements uh or different standards, I'm sorry. More so just in sizing, more than anything, everything else is consistent in terms of lighting, material um it's made out of. Um one of the bigger changes with this is actually standardizing um how these are mounted and, and um what they alluded to earlier with the rail system and the acrylic backer. Um so how they're mounted now, and if you've driven by there recently, you can see um a lot of these are mounted directly to the wall. So that means when a tenant comes down, that means there's a bunch of holes left in the wall. So you have to usually patch them and paint them. Damages the wall over time, um creates a whole bunch of issues. And when you're dealing with um kind of the, with the retail sense, there's a lot of, you know, company, uh businesses go in, some last for a year, some last for five years. It kind of depends on, on that, so there can be a lot of changeover. So we established a rail system um that you basically drill into the wall once and then from there on out, you don't drill into the wall from there. Everything gets attached to the rail system. They're halo illuminated with five thousand Kelvin, there's the acrylic backer on it. Um and we think that that is gonna be super helpful in maintaining a clean image uh with the standardization moving forward. If you've driven by there, um you can see the, where Fun Max has moved in, there is a ton of holes where their sign is right now uh because they did not paint patch where it is now. That is what we are trying to avoid with that. Um you can keep scrolling a little bit with um, with this. So this is again just another example um of the signage. Um you can see it illuminated at night. We're trying to keep letter heights the same for each of the um, you know, with the retail versus junior anchor versus anchor. Um and this we think gives the town much more clear instructions on, you know, what's gonna be approved and what's not gonna be approved because there's a strict set of guidelines that they have to follow in order to meet the criteria for, for this.
What, what are those guidelines? Just tell me that. It seems to me that the Luna uh lettering, well, maybe they are the same height, but. What's that, to the left of the word Jenny? Something that's part of the building, part of the home?
Uh that's just an existing gooseneck light that's there.
Oh, 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 okay.
So those lines are the rail system that you're talking about?
Yes.
What's that made out of?
Uh I believe they're made out of aluminum. And then they're painted to match the uh facade color so that they blend in.
Okay.
Um so they're uh sanctuited a little bit now for the drawings, that way you can see them. But um typically they are, typically they blend much more into the building so that they aren't a cause of distraction.
Gotcha.
So I, I wanna go back to something that Dagi mentioned earlier 'cause we had this previous discussion at some point this, earlier this year about the potential for apartments to be in that area. And um I just, I, I guess I wanna understand what will happen to, 'cause we did have a discussion about what would happen to those local businesses, should apartments be built there? And so how do these two things interact?
I think they operate independently.
Okay.
Yeah, movie theater isn't gonna go anywhere.
I, I understand the movie theater isn't, but.
So they operate independently, the, um, you know, you've got a, a developer who's been working on the sign plan for a while. I don't know that there's a particular concrete project yet for the um, for the, for the multifamily homes that, that were kind of introduced to you. So in the, in the time between now and if that project ever comes to fruition, we'll have a new sign plan for the project. And again, it, it, the, the sign plan will, we'd probably come back in and revise it, but the sign plan largely um applies to, to the balance of the site. If you think about this, just, just retail portion, this small report, it still is going to apply to the anchors, it's still gonna apply to the, to the um, to the pad sites. So um we have no other way to, and I'm not quite sure Matt is privy to that um either, he probably knows much as me.
No.
So that's, that's what we know.
Pretty much is pretty this like.
Independently.
I was gonna, I mean. You had asked where, where the other details are. So in the, in the packet, the applicant had submitted um.
Yeah, in the staff report or in the project description?
Um just hang on, I'm gonna show it to you. I think it was, yeah, it was in Dropbox, but um.
Had a positive referral from the VRB.
It did with those changes, yeah, I'm sorry, I was just stumbling a little bit here.
Okay.
But um, yeah, so when Art, Art Effects submitted a full package, included the project narrative and then it, so for instance, we have a, a, a full revision proposal that shows, oh, why am I not, why is that not showing? Alright, God, it's my blushing. Yeah, there we go, so. This is, this is, this is, this is the full kind of package. So they go head and they classify the tenants, pad sites, anchor tenants, junior tenants, um along with the general criteria. Um talk about pad sites, anchor tenants. So again, we'll, we'll know what these mean by, by attaching, attaching these definitions to that map that we showed you previously. So the, the anchor tenants are numbered and the pad sites are numbered and they each, they each of those get a specific square footage. And that's, you know, and that, that's how we'll be able to, you know, match the tenant to the square footage and what their permit, if we ever had tenant changeover or anything like that. And ultimately, I, if I recall, this unified plan represents um, you know, a decent reduction in total square footage that was approved under the ninety nine plan. So uh the net benefit is probably a good one.
So do, do I understand the ninety nine plan is only for Simsberry Commons?
So Simsberry Commons had a nineteen ninety nine unified sign plan.
Okay, so now we're replacing.
As we have other uni- so Sims, uh Simsmore Square has a unified sign plan. Folks across the street have a unified, they're all from, all from the nineties and early two thousands
Right.
and we, we really would like to work with them all to update their unified sign plan. We just, uh, ha- happened to um.
Alright, so we're keeping, you know, Simsberry Commons separate from Simsmore Square or separate from?
Yes, for, so, so what happens, Dagney, is for, is for these, these projects, these commercial projects that have multiple users and multiple tenants, um you really, you, you must do a unified sign plan. And so each of them have their, their own unified sign plan.
Are they similar or?
Nope, they are completely different. They're all approved by different zoning commissions over, over the course of time. They um.
Okay. They may have their uniquely.
They all have unique characteristics.
Okay, so basically what we're doing is updating and changing the ninety nine plan with a new one.
Yeah. For Simsberry Commons zone, yeah, exactly.
That's it.
Exactly. Yep.
It may be a little premature, but do you have some reaction from the tenants? Especially this idea of allocating their space on the signs.
Um they're all in favor for it. It's, in terms of allocating the space, it's no different than what um is being done before. Um nineteen ninety nine allocates uh square footage for them based on the town's um zoning regulations. More of the focus was on the actual design and mechanical layout of the signage. You know, to kind of clean that up and provide one cohesive look throughout the entire parcel.
I mean, just, ju- just to keep, just for simplicity, for staff to have a matrix and a map that goes with it is life-changing for us when we get tenant changeover, it really is. I mean, I, I, it sounds a little bit like hyperbole, but.
I think it's a great idea, it's a great concept, I'm all for it. I'm a little bit anxious about, you know, enforcing it and making sure that the tenants understand this before they sign their lease. Because once they sign the lease, this is their plan, this is your plan, this is our plan. Everybody needs to sort of, you know, take a deep breath and know that. This is the plan. They can't say, oh, our corporate guys in Chicago, they're not gonna let us sign this lease unless, you know, we can have X, Y or Z. We've heard that before. Some sign anyway and some don't, I guess, I don't know. I understand what you're proposing, the concept.
So have tenants had input?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, when they are onboarded?
Yes.
So I know our current draft for the dark sky is not gonna apply to signs. Uh but I'm a little apprehensive about, you know, I, I don't wanna approve a five K um uh five, five thousand Kelvin lighting and then like a month from now, we say no more than three thousand. And like I don't wanna grandfather someone in like, you know, a month before. So I just, I don't know if.
So the only, I mean.
I don't know what if anything we would wanna do.
So, so for this one, there's no, I mean, there's no necessarily nu- new lighting proposed as part of this application.
But.
Now, we, we could look at the individual one on, 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 for the next item.
Wow. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the halo lighting, which I know does not, is not covered by our current draft.
So. It's not, I mean, it just, it just, it just, it just isn't.
Yeah.
I mean, but this, 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 now, hey, they, Sims, Simsberry Common has halo lighting, right?
That was my question, how does it compare to what's existing?
They, they have. So it, and it, and that meets the requirement today, they have halo lighting, which is, which is consistent with our standard. There's no back, I mean, I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no grandfathered box or, you know, backlit lettering there.
No.
How, 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 I don't know the units of measure, but what, what kind of, what is the lighting that's existing compared to what you're proposing?
Um it's basically on par with that. It's uh, where's the official, five thousand Kelvin is a hundred twenty eight women's uh a foot um which is typically the standard that you usually see is sixty five. So what we're actually proposing is um, you know, less. So um some of the. so um some of these had gooseneck lighting, some of them had internal illumination, some of the halo lighting, again, it's just trying to find the best lighting uh for that parcel and you know, halo we felt was gonna look the nicest um out of all of them.
So just to get to uh Josh's point, I mean, once we adapt the new dark sky regula- uh dark sky regulations, we're not gonna ask uh current residents, current commercial businesses to retrofit, are we?
They're not.
Okay, so I mean, I don't know why we would treat we should consider this application under the covered rules, I mean
I I agree.
I think it would be unfair to
Sure.
say, well, we're gonna go back, we may approve it, but then we can go back and look at, I mean, the rules are what they are today.
No.
Well, I mean, I mean for dark sky lighting, we're not gonna change any of the streetlights on forty-four either, and it's a state road, so I mean, it's a moot point. You could I mean, nothing we do there in that plaza at all is ever gonna affect the overall light coming out of there.
That's good.
So
So is there any other stuff that we're working on together, or is that it, that's the
That's it.
That's it.
That's it, there's really three major points.
Great. Okay.
So but there's a lot of information in there, so just, you know, wanna make sure that we're explaining it and giving, you know, uh the commission ample amount of
Hmm.
time to ask questions and whatnot, I've had my head buried in this two for two years, so um well-versed in all all things Simsbury Commons right now.
Um that bank isn't included in this, right?
No, that
I know, it looks like it's cut out, that's that's not included?
That bank is located uh in Avon.
It's in the town of Avon.
Right. Oh, that's of course, that's right, of course, yeah, okay, huh, and they're on their own.
Outside I think. Outside I think.
Not my problem, okay. Are you doing anything different with raisin canes?
Uh raising raisin canes gets treated um as a pad site, so they were they were added into that, so they meet all the requirements of a
But that's already
of a pad site, so the same as Stop Shop, same as Walgreens.
Gotcha, okay.
So they were, when we started this, they weren't there, and then when we got halfway through, they got added, so then we had to rework them into the plan.
Gotcha.
Okay.
You wanna hear from the public?
You're not being anybody's person who's not affiliated or associated with the commission, I don't think we need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that that's wonderful.
If there are additional questions announced at time.
The uh the one last thing I do wanna add for this is what we do really think is really great about this project moving forward, I know you guys have alluded to, you know, the apartment stuff and whatnot. Um is this plan allows for scalability, so if Simsbury Commons ever becomes bigger, they add more tenants, this plan allows you to um account for that, if they downsize, it also allows you to acc- account for that. The rules are set up, you know, specifically for that, um so if there's any, if there's, you know, any question of, you know, if they do decide, if there's another pad site that gets added, how do you treat that? Or, you know, if they take away two tenants and and turn it into a um, you know, a larger space for retail space, how do we address that? Those hopefully um you know, are spelled out plainly in the the rules that we've come up with.
We appreciate your diligence.
Thank you.
Well, we also have in writing the benefit of the uh staff analysis and the blow-by-blow on the comparison with the standards. So um I should have done this earlier, but I think for now then we'll just close the public hearing. If I could have a motion to that effect, please.
Move that we close the public hearing on application ZC number twenty-five dash thirteen.
Second.
All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Um and those opposed, nay. So the motion to close the public meeting is passed unanimously. In terms of the uh application itself, um does anybody wanna uh raise further points for discussion? Questions? Um then could I have a motion to approve the application as it was submitted with the as it was submitted? Is that you, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay, and we need a second for that.
Second.
I'll second.
Oh.
So the closest one to
Who's first?
To the left. So the second is from you, Daniel. So we have a motion and a second to approve the uh uh application as it was submitted, I think um I don't wanna overlook the fact that there is a written there's a motion that we really, I don't wanna overlook, but that when we vote to approve, this is what we're doing, the zoning commission approves the application, zoning ZC twenty-five dash thirteen. Madhouse, the Art Vex applicant, Simsbury Commons LLC owner, for a special exception pursuant to section nine and section twelve, the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow additional tenant signage at five thirty, which is on the road, Simsbury Commons. Assessor's map B five twenty, block five away, lot zero zero dash B, uh one dash P. Simsbury Zone B three, as submitted with an additional item number one, the sign shall substantially conform to the plans generated by Art Vex uh dated July tenth, twenty twenty-five. That's the motion. But now we'll vote on it, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It passes unanimously, so I think we're all set. Now we're done.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
The second item is a is a site plan application, not a public hearing, but it is for the signs for the Nest School, which is located at thirty Hot Meadow Street, I think we used to call it thirty-four. Um maybe when it came through is the site plan, but it's been readdressed, it's it is thirty. So the Nest School is um fifteen thousand square foot uh child daycare center that was approved maybe last year uh by this by this body, and they're in with a freestanding sign and a wall sign. Um the freestanding sign is located at their entrance, which is really off of that kind of main access road into Aspen Green and and the, you know, into the into the site. Then the wall sign is really right above their entrance, I'll show you that in a second. So the freestanding sign, one freestanding sign, double-sided, it's a twelve-square-foot sign, uh six-square-foot high. It it certainly meets the requirements, the standards, uh we allow up to a maximum of thirty-two square feet for the freestanding sign. And the wall sign is a fifty-two-square-foot wall sign placed above the entrance, there's in those are individual letters placed on the building. Um so i- i- the design review board, which just reviewed it uh within the last hour, the applicant did not uh has not attended either of these meetings, um they have been notified of these meetings, but uh the applicant uh is not here, obviously. So the design review board uh gave a positive recommendation, but with some clear conditions on a change in um in sign design, which was the freestanding sign specifically to the freestanding sign, that the freestanding side should match the building colors, and the building colors are white background with blue trim. Um Miss Beal probably remembers this, um were you on here, were you on, I don't even remember, um
That's twenty seconds, okay.
So
It's been a while.
This is a this is a this is kind of a tan or a beige background with a gray, kinda they they called a warm gray trim. But the but the but the building is white with essentially elements of blue trim, so that is what the the
The royal, what was the new roof?
From what I remember?
I don't know.
No, what it's they they did a series of kind of canopies or um you know, bumpouts that had a blue standing seam.
Don't stop. Okay.
The elements, so that is so that's what they recommended, and we carry that recommendation to you tonight.
That is a beauty. Yeah.
Hmm.
Um if if for some reason we once we alert the applicant, uh you know, one option would be to to approve this application tonight with those recommendations. Um and if the applicant had a had an issue with that, we would be back with the applicant, um you know, essentially to rehear it. I I I think y- your other option is to not take any action until September, you you could certainly could do that, um I I'm sure that they want their sign in September, but you know, w- we we haven't obviously had the time in the last hour since the design review board met to reach out to the applicant, let them know that um it's approved, but with a some a different color scheme. And this this happens, the design review does do that, um we usually have the applicant in the same room, but I just I think it's important for Brittany and I both to be clear with you that 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 is what happened, that they they recommend, the design report recommends the sign approval, but with s- a different color scheme.
So to understand, the freestanding one isn't white, but more muted, gray?
It's not white, it's a it's a it's this is a beige background with a with gray trim.
It's more muted. And so what are they suggesting it be?
White background with a blue trim, to match
Okay.
the building, which you can kind of, you can see the blue trim here.
Match.
Yeah.
And then this is this is a white structure now.
They didn't say anything about the font.
Yeah, that's my
So they 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 all talked a little bit about, so so there were se- yes, uh there were several members of the design review board who who were not fans of the font.
It it it's obviously like very written.
Yeah.
There were also several who were like, well, it is their scheme, it is their franchise design, um so
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yes.
You know, and
So they're not suggesting we change
I mean, it's you know, it's two hundred feet from the road, so it's not, you're not really gonna catch that that font.
Yeah.
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 Yes.
It's an visual issue other than reading it.
It's gonna be able to read it either at two hundred feet.
Yeah, well, it's it's basically just to differentiate it from the apartment building, so you drive into the right place, right?
Ah, their mind.
Yeah.
Well but you know, that is, right, 'cause that's gonna be located here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just to make sure, hey, turn here.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it is it fair to say that the DRB didn't approve it have have as it was submitted?
That's correct.
Their approval was conditioned on the change.
It is, yes, sir, it certainly is.
On that white background and the blue trim, yeah.
Right.
It is.
I support that.
I I I support that, I'm just surprised, are they saying that the base should be blue as well?
Yeah.
Sure. What do you mean?
Exactly. It just seems more garish to me, you know, like the other one seems more, I mean, I I would defer to the design review, I feel like they have
Yeah.
more style and you know, better specifications than I do.
So, yeah.
But that's
But they have but they have
They little, I mean, I wrote it down, the 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 this is what they said, white background with blue trim and
White background.
Like I can see like a bru- blue roof, but I would think that the bottom was, but
Well, that could be
Yeah, whatever, whatever, I don't agree, I know, I can
You certainly can make that distinction if you wanted to.
Sure.
Or did the applicant explain why they weren't able to attend this evening?
We haven't spoken to them, we we notify the applicant.
Okay, wouldn't we expect the applicant to be here or something like this?
Often.
Yeah, so I'm not inclined to act on this without the applicant, especially with the changes proposed by the DRB, I would
I would also support that.
I usually put it off.
Interesting.
I could.
I'll have to hear it twice, okay? Act on it tonight, and then they come back and say they don't agree with the changes the DRB proposed, and sure, gotta hear it again.
So does someone wanna make a motion that we table this for action at a later time? This application.
Yeah, I mean, what Tony says makes sense, is that if they don't like it and they come back, then we're just hearing it twice as opposed to just waiting for them to it it we're as is, I wouldn't really care, but since we've made a change that they're unable to respond to, we're just gonna have to do it all again, right, so.
But I but by that logic, if we just say, sure, we approve it with the recommendations of the design review committee, and they say, okay,
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
then we're done, but if they don't like it, then they would come back.
No, we're done. Well, I I think
So there's a fifty-fifty chance that they'd come back, but there's a hundred percent chance they come back and we table it.
Yeah, no, but I think that, you know, when we improve some signage, we should see what the sign looks like.
Okay.
And and the suggestion that it'd be white and blue.
Alright, I hear that. Hey, Johnny, is your is your issue that the applicant isn't here, is that part of it, 'cause that that, yes.
The breadth of options is huge.
Yes.
We can't ask them questions.
I think so, the applicant's not here to address any questions we have.
Right.
Yes.
Right, 'cause la- last time the DRB gave us something that we were we weren't sure about, the applicant basically told us, hey, it's gonna be really, really hard to do what the DRB
Okay.
recommended, and we ended up overriding the DRB, and and it kind of sided with the applicant on that, we have not given the option to use from now.
Yeah.
This is
It was there, I I don't mean
That was a little bit ago.
For the Goddards.
I I would be
It was there was some odd something or other, um and we ended up disagreeing with the DRB on that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it was a Goddard.
It was.
Yeah, so I I I'm down to just uh
I just defer to this.
Table this one, and then if they say, hey, we love it, please just do it with blue and white, great.
Okay.
Okay, let's just move on here, could I have a motion to table this application? Twenty-five fifteen.
I'll move that.
Yeah, I just have a question.
And a second, please.
Are they close to being ready to open?
I'm sure they are.
Cause I drove by and it looked like
Yeah.
I'm I'm sure they are, yeah, they've got their certificate of access.
So are they in a rush to have a signed decision?
Well, they can't be in that big of a hurry, see.
They'd have
She might with you.
I can't speak to that. I'm sure they'd like it, I'm gonna I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
When when's the next time we can hear that next one?
We need a second.
You will you meet uh September.
September.
It's in September.
It's in August.
Three. Right? September third. Wednesday, September third.
We're meeting
We're we're in September.
Well, or the other suggestion is just approve it deferring to the aesthetic judgment of the design review board.
No.
No?
Well, that that's that's a possibility.
The the judgment was to say they could have it in effect, any shade of blue they want, any shade of white they want.
But that doesn't make sense, we'd like to see
Well, they just said blue and white.
Yeah, but that doesn't
They didn't
Yeah, to to match, I mean, they said to match the blue and white to match the the colors in the building.
Yeah. It's wherever the colored building is.
Well
And we do have the we do have a color board, if you, I mean
Yes, yes.
Okay.
This is the building color board, if you wanna see that.
We have a motion and a second, so
Yeah, let's move on here, so we have a motion and a second to table this
We're not
to a future meeting. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. And unanimously, we're tabling this motion.
Was the motion on the second? I didn't, I made the motion, okay. I need a second, sorry. I don't know who the second was.
Anybody wants
Somebody somebody say they seconded it, please.
Jad, oh.
I seconded it.
Thank you.
I I remember now, I mumbled, sorry.
He's still on European time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said it in Italian.
Italy time, yeah.
Okay. So the Twenty-five fifteen is tabled, uh the next item on the agenda is introduction and discussion regarding lighting regulations, the draft lighting regulations. Did you wanna?
Uh this is Brittany's show.
Oh, this is Brittany's show, okay.
It's my show. So we have before you, um long time coming, I know, a draft lighting uh regulation that um Ms. Marjorie Winters and I, the chairwoman of the conservation commission, have been working on together uh for the past, I would say, six months or so, I'm going back and forth on it. So this regulation looks to incorporate um a dark sky zoning regulation, which as you recall was um one of your action items from the P O C D, the twenty twenty-four P O C D. In that section entitled What We Want to Protect, page sixty, if you wanted to take a look. Dark sky lighting aims to, among many things, reduce light pollution and its impact to the night skies, as well as reducing energy use. Some key principles of dark sky lighting that we incorporated into the regulation, uh shielded fixtures. Um and if you look to the diagram on your right, that this these are lighting fixtures that direct light downward, um preventing any of that uplighting uh spill. An appropriate brightness, and so the amount of light intensity allowed at property lines. Um if you look at previous site plans, they're usually we we have photometric plans sometimes included with them, and you'll see those foot candle dots at the property lines, and sometimes they say zero point one. That that refers to the the brightness, the lighting intensity. Um also color temperature, so this is the light appearance um by the light source. Dark sky is the more warmer tones than the colder ones. Um like you'll see those bright LED, you don't see them as much anymore, but the bright, bright LED lights, those are a higher color temperature than the warmer, you know, yeah, more yellow, white, uh lower Calvin temperatures. Also included are timing controls, so that utilizing things like motion sensors uh to limit lighting uh used during during the late hours when when not needed. So this this new lighting regulation would be um included in the Simsbury zoning regulations, the Simsbury Center code, as well as your Simsbury Form Based Code, which is Hartford North and um Hartford North and South property.
As it's as it's stated here?
Yes.
Okay.
The regulations would apply to
Well, I don't know if it's sta- stated here, but when we when we get to drafting the ad and um we what we'll do is we will do is we usually do kind of a um a a zoning approach that says it'll be added to this section of the center, so this section of the Hartford Simsbury Form Based Code, this section of the zoning rights.
Right.
But it's as, I thought you meant as it's written. But it's as, I thought you meant as it's written.
Yeah, we would this version would we we would propose to go into those all 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 of our zoning codes across the board.
Got it. Thank you.
How would you envision, or maybe I'm cutting, I'm going too far, I'm jumping ahead, but how would you envision implementing this?
Mm.
You know, for existing lighting and existing or
So it would not apply to existing lighting. It would apply to new site plans and any site plan amendments that change lighting on a property would require it.
Is there any thought, and again, this may be above and beyond, of implementing something that will modify existing in the future?
That is difficult to do under state statute where if you have a new regulation, every it's everything, once that regulation is adopted going forward. It's it's hard to go back. It's called legal all the other properties become legal nonconforming, cause they're not conforming to the current
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we might we might opt to a, you know, a more friendly
Yeah.
education style.
And that's so this does not apply to residential properties.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or as I mentioned, sign regulations, yes. Um but the idea is to make sure to educate more about using and make people familiar, make people aware that Simsbury will be a dark friends, dark sky friendly town. Um and will have information on how you can be too as a resident.
So Brittany, are there any other uh towns that apply these rules to residential buildings?
There are a few towns that apply to residential. Um I believe Newtown applied to residential as well as Stamford.
Okay, and is there a reason to go in? But they're gonna
The individual, here's the thing, it's Brittany, but I talked long and hard about this because it's it it's just a challenge. We 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 don't indivi- first of all, we don't review individual house plans. So we don't even, there there's no there's no way to do that. And there's just no way to be no it for 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 town staff knocking on individual property owners' doors and say, you gotta change out your street, your you know, your your house lamp. There's just, we're not gonna do it. It it just would create such anxiety and antagonism. It it really would. It would. It would just be impossible.
It's it's an overreach.
And I don't even know if this is really applicable, because we don't have that much developable like developable a land anymore. But somebody came in, came in and said, I wanna build a little development over here.
So it would so when 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 we say it doesn't apply to residential property, if um if we had a subdivision ca- come in, obviously, the streetlights would 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 be required to meet those regulations.
Yeah.
But again, if you, you know, you could get the end the builder to put in the, you know, the the cooler lamps at the beginning, but somebody can go to the store and buy a new light bulb, and there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just curious.
Would existing uses become nonconforming preexisting?
Existing lighting would become
The lighting would.
Yes, legal noncon
The lighting
But maybe the friendly approach, say there's a homeowners association for condo or
Yes.
Yes.
The communities, you've talked to them, encouraged them to
Right.
Think about it.
And even maybe the idea of with building permits, we have a pamphlet on dark sky light lighting, something like that, and make sure it's on our website. Um to make to make sure people are aware.
Is there any study on associated costs with uh including this in a any any plan?
Cool. So one of my, one thing I'm going to do is talk to other towns about other challenges, and if they've had that experience, feedback from developers.
Yeah, our plan was to get this in your hands today. You have it over the summer. We will do a work session in September, and we'll also get this. I mean, we have, Brittany has contacted um like uh lighting companies, uh you know, to get an understanding. We understand that that that, I mean, this is, most of these kind of fixtures are industry standard, and they are widely available, and they are um not you know, not not with great additional cost necessarily. Just, you know, the old way of doing things, people want a big wall pack that's unshielded. Uh it's just for for lighting and security. So I I I I do think that during that period, we'll be able to come back with a little bit of in- information for you.
We have been requ- um requesting dark sky friendly lighting from previous developments, and I think they've all
Yeah, well, we get folks to do full quote on fixtures.
cooperated and have done it. This ju- this just codifies it and has a standard that people can look to and know what to expect when they're
Yeah.
um applying for site plans.
Even the town, when the town did their the parking lot out here, those are all
Yeah.
right, I mean, essentially dark sky friendly fixtures. Compliant, dark sky compliant fixtures.
So if somebody is already existing, do they need to apply for permit to change their lighting?
Thanks for very good. So if they change their lighting, if they change, let's say, um height of a pole or add lighting, wall lighting, or anything like that, they would have to come in for a site plan amendment.
Okay.
So the next step of this, um it would be a text amendment, requires a public hearing, and notify CROG, funding towns as per the notification requirements.
Yeah, I I I think what we we should we should do, like a a a work session, we'll should kind of walk through each section and go through exactly what we're saying, why are we saying it? What the exemptions are, what that, I mean, uh uh I mean, I think that would, we really just weren't ready to do that tonight for you. We just wanted to give it in your hands.
And I'd like Marjorie here too, as well, she's very knowledgeable in the dark sky lighting.
Yeah, yes.
Were you gonna go through any more of seven pages?
No.
No.
Don't think so.
Well, let me ask you a couple of questions. On page three, paragraph seven D. I just wanna make sure I'm reading this correctly. Seven D says that um it has to do with seasonal light.
Right.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading this right. When Christmas comes, our commercial, you know, the people run yeah, cuz homeowners are are not subject to this, so this idea that they have to turn their Christmas lights off between eleven and sunrise. You know, that doesn't apply to homeowners, but it does apply to
We would ask that to apply, yeah, ask to apply to
Apply to?
Commercial.
I can hear
Commercial, to to commercial.
Yeah, okay. And and that's a a common requirement today, is that the case?
It is. Other towns I've looked at have um seasonal lighting as part of part of the regulations, yeah.
I'll I'll mention that, I mean, in in walkability stuff, um there's something called pedestrian centered lighting, which is not the exact same thing as uh dark sky, but are compatible things. So as you're trying to create like more pedestrian friendly areas or more mixed use areas, pedestrian centered lighting and dark sky lighting are consistent with those uses, if that's something you're trying to encourage, which we've been trying to encourage in the past, so I mean, it's it's good to know for the future.
Okay, and then on uh page four, near the bottom, the application for requirements. Number two refers to unstamped and signed by a professional qualified in outdoor lighting. Like who would that be?
So I always thought it was engineers, lighting, I think professional engineers. Um I'm told that it it doesn't actually
Well, I I'll ask this ask this differently. What does that mean? Qualified professional qualified?
There's 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 lighting engineers that uh that have certification in in lighting.
And they produce those photometric plants.
And they produce the photometric plants.
Wouldn't we be better off saying that that it has to be, you know, whatever? Not just a qua- a professional qualified. What's qualified mean? I don't wanna get into all that, but
So a certif- you're saying a professional certified in outdoor lighting?
There's probably, we we can find whatever language, the language is appropriate.
Find a a real term for it.
Okay.
What what is that career field?
Society of Elating Engineers or something like that. I'm not sure that exists.
Where You don't wanna debate in the end with somebody over
No, we don't.
Not taking action on this tonight, right?
No, no, would no, we we're we we should, I I would recommend a work session in September when we
And the work session is for the people in this room?
Yes, it is.
Public.
Well, that's well, the public can come, but I I would I would do with you guys and 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 Marjorie, and we have, you know, a lighting expert to come help us.
I am curious, just, you know, if we're gonna have a public hearing on this once all is said and done. I mean, to me, I've always been very much in favor of this, so I just assume everyone else is too. Do you know of any other towns have encountered anybody like pushing back on this plan, these types of things?
Right, I So looking at different towns, it runs the gamut of how complicated it is. You have one page lighting regulations and you have twenty page regulations. I know the town of Windsor has a very complicated lighting regulation, and I need to speak with them more. They 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 did say there there were some challenges. I'm trying to get to the bottom of what those are.
Hmm.
Um
Those are recent, right?
So my experience has been uh there are members of the development community who push back on this a little bit.
That that's what I would, you know, expect, I think. Not expect, but if there were people to push back on it, I can see it being
Uh More so because be- because they see lighting as um you know, as as the ability to identify their location.
Well, the president, they're gonna be
Yeah.
As, you know, I'm not saying you know, gas stations that look like the moon landing, but but that is, um you know, they find that attractive to it to their to their business. Same thing for office developers and even industrial developers to have um for safety reasons and other things like that. They they don't want to be
That's what I was just gonna say, does anybody push back on the safety element?
They, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so
But I think that's where that awareness comes in, cuz according
That presentation, yeah.
Right, in Marj- uh that presentation, that's not really relevant, or truthful, completely truthful.
Yeah. You know, motion sen- motion sen-
Yeah, I'm just I'm just curious. That's the only place I could say.
Motion sensors can handle a lot of that, so so there there is, I mean, I
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hmm.
Okay.
But but yes, uh so we do, so we will um once once we're, we will um in the next week, we'll send it to the Chamber of Commerce and ask them to send it out to there, you know, certainly give the chamber briefing and and Main Street. I mean, there are there are business owners and developers who who will have some interest in this, and so we wanna we wanna make sure they're aware of it.
Okay, great.
Is there any way to flag what what's here that's not in the current state regulations?
State regulations.
State regulations, there aren't any state regulations.
With state, I thought there's a state code that we're not in compliance with. It was one of the reasons we were tackling this.
No.
We're in full compliance with the state requirements today.
Yeah, there are, I don't think there are state lighting requirements. This is a this is this is a a local preference. If you adopt it, it's a local preference. We have zero sign reg- or or lighting regulations today. There are no lighting regulations in your uh in your zoning code. But as Brittany said, I mean, we, over the years, we have been fairly successful with most applicants on um, you know, kind of a uh a cajoling and a and a and a convincing. And most big developers are gonna, you know, give it to anyone. They're they're ready, they've done it before.
And we've heard it in various public hearings that, you know, that this is a an interest of and concern of people in town, so I think it's really, I'm very excited about it personally.
Yeah, thanks for putting this together, Brittany.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. That's great.
And and don't think of it as finished. We're, you know, we're certainly, we want your input, want like uh like Mr. Elliot tonight, I mean, so we'll yeah, it's still a work in progress. Brittany Brittany's done a great job, really. I mean, I everybody should know that. She took a lot of time to 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 kind of carve out.
So
Yes.
I mean, they they were some, there are some re- really complicated sections of code that folks have adopted, like, you know, dozens and dozens of pages, which is like, we gotta make that a lot simpler. So uh and we, she's done, she's made a good effort to do that.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
So this is coming back, the first meeting in September? That's a lot of
Yeah, depending on what they what how 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 heavy that schedule is, but yeah.
Great.
We'll be in September. And I think then we'll look for like a a public hearing in October.
Great.
Okay. Well, if everybody's done with that topic, um that's the end of our agenda for tonight, so we can take a motion to adjourn.
I second Shannon's motion.
I I did make it.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So eight oh five, meeting's adjourned.